...the July 12th special meeting of the Department of Education. This is a meeting held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district business and is not to be considered a community public hearing. There is a time to public comment during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Item 12. If you would like to make a public comment, please fill out a comment card over there. They will be picked up later in the meeting. Now, would you please stand and join the party and perhaps our... In terms of my opinion, would like to lead us in what we believe is...
...to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a rather busy meeting here, but I want to take one second to welcome Dr. Schubel, attending your very first meeting with us. We're very excited to have you here.
Thank you. I'm excited to be here. It's been a great transition with Mr. Bob's staff again, very welcoming. And I told him for sure that at some point in my learning on Forest Hills, I would be referencing these fan raps. So, at some point I'll say, yes, I do work for these fan raps. And then suddenly chuckled and I said, but I will transition. I've got my lanyard that says Forest Hills, all my skills. And I knew it was official last week when they gave me the keys to the kingdom. I said, oh, great. And when they came in to do all the security cameras, and I said, this is nice, because it's the same system we used in my previous district. And so, I do know how to operate that. But tech team was amazing with me last week transitioning, because I am an Apple person and we do all words in Microsoft. And so, it's not that I can't do both platforms. It's just that I'm more comfortable using the Apple platform now. And so, they were great. So, everyone's been very welcoming.
Wonderful.
Thank you. Glad you're here.
I have to say, I did a double take when I was looking for all the documents in our board packet last night to see your signature on the papers instead of Dan's. Yeah, it just like I was scrolling and I was like, oh, hey, that's different.
Well, I'm sure Val has been adjusting to all that also. And last week she was trying to bring me up to speed on all the payroll and how we do it and how it transitions online and what needs to be proved. And she was being very, very patient with me as I was going through the system. And at one point she was just standing there looking at me like, okay, now that would require you signing. So, I was like, okay, say honors, I was like, it's good to go. It's like, no, I said, okay, just be patient with me. It's my first week last week. So, it's been good.
All right, well, let's move on to our first order of business here, which is the superintendent search. We asked Dave Phillips from MLI to come back and review, because we had some questions and concerns about the timing of the search. So, Dave, would you like to give us a little bit more information about the best ways to move forward?
Well, we are on device calendar number three. And that's okay. Please understand that. We initially started off with, we thought we wanted somebody by August 1st. And then we said, okay, can we get somebody by January 1st? And then we said, well, what is the July 1st starting date look like? So, just to cut to the chase, the most frequent hiring period is that July 1 timeframe. That's when probably 95% of your jobs are filled. That's when people are looking for the move. That is the traditional starting date. But that doesn't mean it has to be the only date. So, the last calendar I put together, I think it's dated June 27th at the top, talks about the July 1 starting date. And some of the rationale we put together, including the dates on that, I would like to go through so you completely understand that. We would not begin the process until about December. The reason for that is you want pertinent and timely information coming to me through the focus groups and through the surveys as we gather that information. If we started in September gathering the information, things can happen in a school district, okay? You could have emergencies that take place in the fall. You could have, you know, the bond issue, yea or nay, is going to impact the information we gathered from the public and on the surveys. So, that's why we want to wait for some of those things are over. If we started gathering information in September from those groups and then we had a four or five month delay before any more work is done, obviously, again, the decisions by the board, decisions by the administration can impact the input people would have moving forward. So, we want that timeliness to be a major factor there. So, that's why we have the website information for the public going on about 10 days. And I've already been informed, we might want to link in that. And that certainly can be done. But then I would be in here that first week of December doing focus group meetings and getting that information to everyone. Then we would have the job posted by middle of December. They're all in the various sites. It would be there for about two months. And then, near the end of February, February 26th, according to this calendar, I would meet with the Board of Education. And again, I want to make this very clearly known that that can be a very long meeting. So, we're going to want to start that earlier than a day, because you're going to be reviewing applications. And it's the only time in this process at the Board of Education we go into closed session, and that's to review applications and application materials that the candidates have submitted. But that's only if the candidates ask to have things kept confidential. And according to my searches I've done, 100% of the candidates have requested that. So, I would anticipate that here as well. You can't make any decisions behind closed doors and closed sessions. You can't deliver it. You can be presented information, but I will be delivering a lot of that information too. We'll come out of that meeting and then we'll decide in an open setting on what candidates the Board would like to interview. We'll take the thorough process to do that. So, that can be a fairly long meeting. I've had Boards of Education behind closed doors before four to four and a half hours reviewing information.
What date was that?
That is the 26th right now is what I have that.
Of February?
Of February.
Wouldn't be able to do that, but I'm heavily involved in our audit for Core Health and that ends on February 28th. And I'd really not do that week. So, I'm...
Okay. We can... We can all right? So, we could...
I mean, that's all assuming that we go ahead in this hot by 10:00.
Yeah, we can look at that. And that would adjust probably when we have the first round of interviews and second round of interviews and so forth, just to give candidates some notes. But on this schedule, we had March 4th, 5th, and 6th set aside for first round of interviews. Again, we're not trying to pre-determine how many candidates you're going to interview. I've never had a Board pick more than six candidates to interview. We usually do two an evening. Those are open to the public. The first round is a scripted interview to keep us away from any discrimination. And those last about 75 minutes apiece, depending on how quickly candidates want and the kind of information they want to share. If we only pick out four to interview, we take one of those dates off the calendar. It's a lot easier than adding those to the calendar for that's new. And then two weeks later, we would have a final interviews. We'd have them 18th and 19th, if we're down to two candidates, which seems to be the most popular number. But again, that's a Board decision, how many you want to invite back. Many Boards, in fact, all the Boards I've worked with, held those final interviews on the same night. In between that period of time, we'll work on the visitation. Candidates coming here to spend some time in the district. And we can talk about if the Board wants to go visit other districts. I have not had a Board in the last six years, five years, take a trip to another district. We've gathered all our information, but the candidate's here. But again, that's the Board of Education, okay? And then we will ask you to make a decision after those last interviews. You will have all the information. You will have ample input during the interview process from the audience that's here. We will have forums that they can fill up, be shared with the Board. The audience will be able to submit questions that may be used in the second round of the interviews. Again, the first round is scripted. And if we take questions from the audience during the first round, it's not the same interview for every candidate. So, we want to keep that even playing field. But they can submit those questions and we'll consider using those in the second round. And in many, many cases, those are incorporated into the second round. We might get some questions from the audience on special education that are all worded differently, but have the same focus. We'll write that to incorporate what people want to find out and utilize it that way. So, they may not see their specific question, but the gist will be there. And then we would have the process done prior to spring break, because there is definitely a two-week period of time where it's kind of dead in the state of Michigan, the last week of March and the last week of April. I haven't found a Board member yet that wants to give up their family, pre-planned vacation to do interviews. And I haven't found a Board yet that are, that are, will be telling candidates that you need to give up your family vacation to interview with us. So, we kind of box those two weeks just as dead time. We are now seeing some school districts using that third week in March for spring break. So, that might become a problem, but we'll keep an eye on that. So, then it would be contract negotiations, get that out of the way, get the person hired. So, let's say that all takes place by, you know, mid-April at the latest. The new person coming on board is going to have ample time to make phone calls to Dr. Schubel, to Ms. Dean and so forth, to gather information. But they have personal days, vacation days, where they can come to the district and spend some time, get to know the programs, the people ahead of time. So, it's kind of a soft transition period there. And then be ready to start on July 1. Okay, so that's kind of my thinking of what I think is the best option for the Board, now that we're passing August 1st date for sure. The January 1st is still a possibility if that's what you want to do. If you've got Dr. Schubel for a year, I think that's fantastic. They have somebody of her caliber coming into the district and serving for sales. That's very, very important. So, I think your school year can go as planned and as you say, you proceed with that. And then we have somebody on board next July 1. So, that would kind of be my recommendation of this new calendar. The dates within the calendar, we can work on.
Can I ask a question about the December? Is it possible to move some of that to the beginning of November? I mean, I don't know about you guys, but I feel like this first week, two weeks in December with other commitments that, like, programs even at our churches for little kids or, you know, people trying to celebrate early because they've got all families to... And then it comes right, rush right into Christmas. Would it, would it be a possibility to move that to November where it's a little bit more slow? I mean, we don't, I mean, we have Thanksgiving and a little bit of break there, but before I think people are settled into school December is like people's brains are on other things. So, I just, you know, I didn't know if that was possible.
Holly, I think that's a consideration. Again, I know with Thanksgiving there, some people seem to take longer periods of time off during that time. And that's why that first week after Thanksgiving, I think, could work. It might be the best, because most of your Christmas pageants, holiday pageants and so forth are going to be those last two weeks as school is handling. And that's still available to do that then. And the focus groups, remember, people are coming in for about an hour to meet with me. So, it's not getting up an entire evening, it's not getting up the entire day. They will be with the exception of the administrative team. I want to meet about an hour and a half with the cabinet members and so forth. But everybody else is about an hour meeting. So, that's why I kind of selected that date. I do know families seem to take a little bit longer for Thanksgiving if they're traveling and so forth. Let's either take it prior to Thanksgiving and then still get back. I'm just realizing what happens in schools.
I was just thinking like the beginning of November versus the beginning of December was...
Yeah, again, I think the outcome of your bond issue could sway some discussions we have in the focus groups. I certainly don't want to be negative, but if it went that way, it certainly is going to impact the conversations I'm going to have. Even though the conversation revolves around the superintendent, it's still going to be connected. And remember, a lot of the information I gather in these focus groups, we're writing the profile, which is important to have. But it also helps me to speak to the candidates about what's going on in the district and some nuances that we are not going to put in a profile. And again, the profile is not a job description. It's just a general indicator of what's going on in the district and some of the important elements that we're on.
Is it a concern that if we hire somebody in what goes to April? Is that about the time frame? That their school district is then scrambling? Or do we not have to worry about that? If both superintendents, that's not a factor?
That will not be a factor.
Okay.
That period of time between April 1st and really August 1st, September 1st is a crucial time for hiring. It's anticipated. These candidates should let their Board of Education members know that they are applying for a job. So, it gives them a heads up. I will be talking to Board members for these candidates. So, if they don't tell them, which I'll give them the opportunity to tell them first, they're going to hear from me. I'm going to do the digging on these candidates. And it's a lot better coming from the sitting superintendent than it is from the headhunter. All right, so just letting you know that. So, that'll tell us a lot about the candidates if they can inform your Board members. So, no, that should not be a problem whatsoever. In fact, if we're hiring by April 1st, that gives some of the district's times, probably April, May, June, to have somebody on by July 1st.
Can I... What is, well, why is it not the best timeframe? Why couldn't we say, yes, our goal is January 1? But we absolutely understand if you cannot make January 1 work, the Board would be willing to extend that start date to July 1 and then stick with our original fall schedule?
I would not want to be in the school district for six months as a line-up superintendent. So, if I accept the job and I'm going to stay in my district for six months for negotiations going on, which can be impacted by all the curriculum decisions that are going to be made, it just is not the best way to operate in a school district.
But it does happen, right? I mean, even our neighbors to the doors in Rockford, that's exactly what happened with them. And I don't feel like it went poorly, right?
No, but not for Rockford, but what about over nobody? I don't know.
I don't know.
It is a lot.
Okay.
But that would be my concern. I'm sitting in a superintendent's seat for six months. Everybody knows I'm out the door. And the people look at leaving a district differently than they look at somebody retiring from the district. Okay? And those nuances are important to pay attention to within the school district.
Wouldn't that be their decision where they could start January 1st?
That would be the decision if you want somebody in here by January 1st. Then we go back to that previous calendar, we talked about it. But it's going to be, you've got a transition now. It will be another transition in January and then another transition in July. And we all know change happens in education. It's just part of the business. But those transitions can be difficult in people as well. So, that's why when I heard that you had Dr. Schubel for an entire year, that changes my mindset a little bit. And it might just be a few in numbers applicants that are different going for the July 1 starting time versus January 1st. But those two, three, four, five people might be the main people you want to look at. I don't know that, you know, because I don't know exactly what that pool is going to be like. But again, this should be a very, very desirable job.
Which would mean that probably a January 1 start date wouldn't deter really that many people.
Yeah, I said that before. I don't think it would deter that many people either. And we've had good luck hiring January 1st. But then again, you've got that another big year transition. And...
So, do you find that really best-case scenario and the most positive outcome for all people involved, that that's why you think that this timeline would be best?
Yes. Yes, you said that, right.
Why do you think that not having a lot of movement and action for a standing superintendent wouldn't actually help a bond pass with higher numbers?
It's the unknown. Who are you going to hire?
But isn't there always a unknown? I mean, we don't know who we're going to hire anyway, whether it's January 1st or July 1st.
I get that. But you're going to have steady leadership throughout the school year. You're going to have such steady decisions. You're going to have somebody looking at the budgetary numbers and so forth, that is going to be consistent for the school year. Do we have any more suits that are going to change January 1? Not a year, so we should, should be all right that way. So, that's a good thing. But I, I just think your most prudent time is going to be July 1. And it's best for all parties concerned. I think it's the safest way to go. We can certainly shoot for the January 1. And I told you before, if we shoot for the January 1, we don't find somebody worth here until we get dropped up. So, we would push that out. But if you have a January 1, you discard all the candidates. That sends a message out there as well. Remember, these candidates, this is not a one-way street. You just don't get to pick your superintendent. The superintendent is picking the Board of Education they want to work with as well. It is a two-way street. There have been candidates that walk out even after the first interview saying, thanks, but no thanks. Not interested in working with a seven of that, just the way it can be, for whatever reason. All right? So, I think that's something you keep track of as well.
So, the recent data is here, because we had some of us that think the idea of doing January 1 better. Can you guys articulate what your concerns are about July 1 versus January 1? Because that might help us move forward.
I think my, my only concern and feeling, and I hear what you're saying, it makes a lot of sense. And I'm, I would be fine with moving it. And I think my only concern is how this looks in the community. And just sitting and waiting, I think that just feels like, okay, well, we know we need this. Like, why not start the process? So, I think it would take a lot of communication, obviously, to why we're here and why we're waiting, why it's important to pass the bond and then get a really feedback and have that be timely feedback to when we're... So, I think it's a lot of communication.
Yeah, and Mallory, I think that communication, you just lay it out like, this is why we are doing it. We have a very capable interim superintendent in place to make sure the school year runs smoothly. We're focusing on starting the school year the right way, because we have somebody in place now. We're focusing on the bond issue. And then, it doesn't mean we're void of any information coming in during this time, but then we're turning our focus to hiring our next leader and the person that's going to take us to the next step. People will still argue with the rationale.
Sure, right.
Please understand that.
And this will be communicated to the broader superintendent community of, this is what it's going to look like before still, so they can start preparing that it's not going to be until...
Right. So, for example, September 20, 21st, 22nd, somewhere in there, MESA has her fall conference in Traverse City. It's very well attended. I will be up there, several of the MLI colleagues will be up there. We'll start our recruiting and our talking at that time to potential candidates. So, those things are going to be going on behind the scene. In fact, I will tell you, I've had a couple of conversations with people already saying, okay, what's going on in Forest Hills? So, it, and it's a desirable position, it really is.
And it is accurate to say, to look for August 1st would mean some candidates probably wouldn't come in. To start with at January 1st, probably eliminate some potential candidates from entering the mix. So, technically, I mean, it is accurate to say, by waiting and looking at July 1 start, it, there's nobody, a reason not to apply. It allows everybody who would want to look at this...
I like this timeline, because it shows that we care not only about the potential candidates and their lives, but also the lives of the people that they work with. Like, it's, it's all interconnected. This, to me, looks like the best practice.
And it is fair, and it should be pretty good, I think, to continue to ride the coattails of Dr. Schubel while she's here. To say, if we had to, you know, to throw somebody in here, there would be more urgency to this process. But in my opinion, the longer that Dr. Schubel is here, the more that she can understand, the more that she can give new perspective for the time that she's here. And that, I see that as a key benefit. But I'm not in any rush necessarily. As long as we communicate, I think people would agree with that. The longer we have that insight, it is better for us.
I agree. Anytime that there's a switch-up mid-year for anything is distressing to all parties involved. So, I can, I can understand from the parent perspective, oh, gosh, I really want the best person as soon as possible. But really, I don't know that that would be best for everyone involved, so.
You want the best person.
Right, exactly.
As soon as possible is...
But if it takes time to get that best person?
Well, again, the most important decision Board of Education makes is hiring a superintendent. And it shouldn't be about speed.
But I do agree. It really, I think it is also important to give these reasons repeatedly and through the summer even and everything else to, so that people are aware of the rationale, why we're doing it this way, that there's not some sort of lack of urgency or loss party.
You know, and as a Board of Education, you can say, we've discussed three different timelines. We honestly have, okay? And now, so what fits the district the best? What is going to give us the strongest pool of candidates? And what is going to make our school year, our current school year, run as smoothly as possible?
And keep in mind, we are paying MLI money to serve as our experts. And this is the calendar they recommend to us. A man who has served in three interim positions and understands the power of that position and longevity that will afford us, and has conducted 45 superintendent searches. So, I want you all to give him what your concerns are. And he knows our kind of atmosphere to make sure we're doing what's best for us and our community, but knowing that he's still the expert that we're paying to kind of guide us in the search, right? So...
I would like to see, so we don't like, I mean, I know we're going to have things out there letting them know what we're doing, but I would still like to see some form of community engagement, at least. I'd be more curious to see what people's thoughts and feelings are before the bond. And I'd like to see what happens after the vote with the bond. I mean, it's, it's almost like before you take the test and after you take the test, just to guide the community. This is my first time going to a bond, just to hear the flavor that's in the water and what that looks like for the future for us. And any other things that may have, you know, coming in. I think people are anxious to be involved and get involved, but they're also anxious to be Dr. Schubel. You know, you've got those things, if we could just do a little tiny bit, so we're like starting the slow climb up the hill and then really engage. I mean, I think people would feel like they're still coming along for the ride. And we could just like put it, you know, stop it and then restart it again. We're already in the process. So, I know we have to slow it down a bit, but I would like to see, you know, some of these tasks or, you know, the groups come together and, you know, just kind of...
And I would agree with that. And to me, that would be one of the only ways that I would feel very comfortable with delaying. It's the timeline we're talking about. I, I don't feel like any of these reasons to delay it are that compelling. I, I think it needs to stay in the forefront of our community's mind, in our mind. Like you said, like we all know, that is our most important job, is to hire a superintendent. So, I don't like the antics of stop talking about it until the focus groups in November. I think if we can do the online survey ahead of time, so that that's up on the website, and maybe it's up for more than two weeks. I just, I think there, it needs to just be present more than the focus groups starting in November.
Well, and I, I think one thing, though, though, is, you know, yes, our job is to hire the superintendent. We also have hired a superintendent. Yeah, she's, she's already here. So, it's not like we have not been doing our job. We went and full steam ahead, worked very hard and got an amazing rock star to come in, who I think is going to be able to lead us very well and provide stability. I'm hoping probably for a year, because as Mike mentioned, or State mentioned, sorry. You know, the transition time is hard. I mean, I know Dr. Schubel is drinking from the fire hose right now. And she's got a lot to get in right now and to process. And then start to put things into place and to move and grow. And the more time we're able to get her in that role, will then help her to transition new person when they come in. If we hire that person fairly quickly, she's still on her upward climb of learning.
Yeah.
And will be able, I mean, she'll still be able to impart knowledge, but it won't be as effective as if she's been here and goes, okay, this is where we are. This is where we're still going.
But doing some of those small things doesn't unseat her from doing what she's doing.
But does that, does that take away from the aptitude and intellect of our community? And we say this a lot, we have smart people around us. Why are we trying to trick them to say... And we say this a lot, we have smart people around us, but why are we trying to trick them to saying, "Oh, see, we're not, we're not delaying it, because we're participating in September here, and now just take a couple months off and do it?" I think if we provide our rationale, and we're not hi, we're not allowing other people to decide for us and make up a story about why we're not focused on it every day in the month of September, I think people would understand that. If, if the optimal search pool happens in early next year. We, and we have other things that we're also focusing on, though we're not focusing on the search. But it makes sense to delay all of this impact altogether in three months over the winter. Yeah, I don't think people would understand that in a short amount.
I know, I would never use the term tricking the community.
No, 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 I, I don't mean, I mean, I just, I just mean, you know, I mean, your rationale in fact was, we could do this with the bond, because people are smart enough to process all this together, I totally agree. So you don't think that they would be able to process the idea that it just may, while we're in a good place now, we don't have to hire someone the next three months or six months, and we're still in really great shape? That all of this just happens together in a three-month time period that starts in December?
And I don't know whether it's made impact or not, but just thinking about the gravitas of multiple surveys. How many things as parents do we get, and this is not just parents, this is the entire community, right? But how many things as parents do we have to fill out all the time? And just sometimes perhaps skip a, a one or two, like, well, you know, this, they already have this from me. So I don't know if it, it takes away some of the gravitas of the actual survey, the one that considers to be the most important to us. But I don't know that. I look to you for your opinion on that.
Yeah, I, I've been in your seat hiring a CEO before. I was president of the hospital board, and we had to hire a CEO. So I've, I've gone through that. And we had a, a very, very major international firm that did the search, okay? They stressed to us the importance of the timeliness of inputs as we went through it. And, you know, if you look at our original calendar, weeks this process would take, we actually had a twelve-week process filled out. This is all, this is going a little bit longer than that. This is going closer to sixteen weeks, because we have time, we have some dead period in, during the holiday seasons and so forth, to get the information to let candidates talk to me, let candidates have family conversations and so forth. So we've already spread this out a little bit longer than we normally would. I just, you know, could you run the survey ahead of time? But does that mean you're not gonna run the survey when we have a set and the timeliness is there? You could do that, I mean, that, that could be something you do. But then are people gonna go in there, they run it twice, and we talked about, people worried about people from out of the districts submitting information, how many people just keep loading? I don't know. I know this process has worked for us, and has worked very, very well for us. And that's, that's where I kinda go with it, and that's my expertise with it.
I'm curious, when do we pick our focus groups again, like, and let, let you know who we're gonna talk to?
We would start working probably with Val and she would work with you guys. Talk about who are those groups, let's get them meet, and we'll, we'll send out invites to them, Val will. And again, you're inviting people in to meet with us, you're not mandating them.
Right, and when are we gonna do that process of letting them know they will have these?
We usually do that at least two weeks ahead of the actual focus group dates, so they have time to work it into their personal calendars as well. So we look at that roughly November fifteenth.
Then I know, I mean, for you, the focus group store, maybe they could start talking amongst themselves? Or if they probably know they're gonna come in, I, I mean, if we let the community know what the process is, people will already start talking with each other and.
Right.
I think, I, I wanna piggyback on this. I, I have time to review it, like, the times that I could spend most time in community, and even when I was coaching, to listen to families talking. It's usually football games, the soccer games, you know, they're, they're hanging out, they're, you know, conversing, you know, and it's the most well-attended usually is fall events for us, and then it's basketball season, usually I would say, week next, and then it goes on to the outside sports. So I think if you start the process asking for the focus groups, people will start talking. It's at least during the pot a little bit, not December or January, we're kind of doing that uphill climb. I just feel like, we're already in the boat, we got a captain in the boat, we're leaving the shore. I'd rather we start rolling out there slowly and then turn the motor on and then go, when we have to for the last. But I think people talking in community, I find out in, in January, February, March, people aren't as much. They might be attending a play or basketball, but it's not as much as, as fall is like here in Michigan. I feel like that's when everybody's out at farms and conversing and having runs over, and you're building up to holiday season. I think why not keep it in the mix there, where people are having conversations and then, and then heading with the surveys and the task, you know, groups and, and kind of build off of that, but maybe we might get the expert in, so.
I want it very clear in the communication with what our timeline is, that people will be talking about that, I think, in the fall. Because they'll be preparing, and, hey, what do you think about this? You know, how are you gonna?
I'm just saying, like, the survey questions, like, that's kind of a nice thing, you know, I mean, like, you're hanging out and you're kind of saying, hey, you know, what are your thoughts on that, or what are your thoughts on the bond? Or what are your thoughts on, like, the new school calendar, two weeks before, sometimes, I mean, there's a lot of things that are in there right now.
Our survey is not going to focus on the bond or the school calendar. Our survey, or our survey and our focus groups are focusing on the attributes, characteristics, skills, and so forth needed in the new superintendent. This isn't a strategic plan process, where you, where you're looking at all of that. This purpose is the superintendent hiring.
So what Dave's saying is, bond management might affect attributes you are looking for in a candidate. You know, wow, I wish that person would have had this quality to make that process run more smoothly, or whatever. So it's not about how did the bond go, but it's now that I see how that management oversaw some aspect of the district, that's something that I would reflect in my comments back to the focus group. Makes sense? So it's not about the activities of the district per se, it's how they are managed, and the kind of person that the community would like to see operating in some certain way in the future.
I think one thing too, that some of this conversation is not as much about MLI, but it is about the way that we as the district communicate what's gonna happen, which is not on you, it's on us. And so I think that's where a little bit of my hesitation comes in, is that I do think we are making some strides in that area, but I, I, I do think there needs to be a very concerted effort, that this is communicated so clearly and multiple times, not just once, so that it is evident that we are moving forward, even though maybe we're not having focus groups till end of November. But, but there's, there's information about who's gonna be in the focus groups coming out in early November. And maybe even in our district communication, we know what those survey questions are gonna be about the superintendent. So that's communicated in a district communication on the superintendent search link. So you can start thinking about what you would want to say when it's time to answer those survey questions, and then those conversations could happen, like you said. I, I just, I just want there to be a commitment amongst us and the district that the communication is so robust about this. Probably more than we think is necessary, because we're talking about it more than the community is, but just that it's just there all the time.
I mean, we could certainly put in a line on this calendar that talks about identification of focus groups. So we, we have that by November tenth or first, or whatever date we pick it as, and we get that out. Then we clean up this calendar, we put it on the website under that superintendent search tab that the wellness and district create. So that's your first piece of communication. The Board of Education has agreed that this is a timeline we are going to follow as we pursue this. So people will be aware of it, and they can start looking in their personal calendars if they're gonna be part of the focus groups, or if they wanna do the survey or so forth. So that will, would be the initial piece of information on the website. Now, if you wanna add something to your communications department and so forth, you certainly could.
Right. I'm good. Or we feel more comfortable than we did after the last meeting? Any other questions for Dave then?
I wanna be able to get Mallory your calendar again. That week of February twenty-sixth is a no-go for you.
I know, yeah. Yeah, we signed audit on February twenty-eighth, and so that week can be very chaotic.
Is there any way I'm posting for six weeks or seven weeks instead of the full eight?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
Early February gives me, it would be, I, I'd say.
We would want it right there, too.
That's true, right, exactly.
So Mallory, what's that timeframe? Higher to February twenty-eighth, what's the timeframe that you would say this would be really challenging for me?
Um, that, that last week would be just very challenging, because if we're paying off fires.
Just that's the twenty-fourth to twenty-eighth, and the second week from me is Friday.
Yeah, I, I do remember cracking for me, but I can work with that last week if there are fires, that would be really bad.
So the twenty, twenty-sixth is Monday, and twenty-eighth is Wednesday, right?
Twenty-sixth is Wednesday.
Isn't that, you're not presenting until plus the March or not?
Well, I, I wanna get, I wanna get it done before spring break, because that period is. That's, that's what I wanna make sure we redo.
Then, so if we shorten them out of deadlines to apply, because some people know for months and months now this posting is coming, can we end it in, end of January or early February, second week of the first week of the fall?
No, CJ, so I, I can do that and get the dates back to you guys. What other complications do we have with dates? We talked about whether it's year, mid-winter break.
It's that President's Day weekend, and we do have a board meeting already scheduled, I believe, on the nineteenth, which is President's Day, it's twelfth.
Twelfth, right.
It's twelfth.
No, it's twelfth.
Oh, it's twelfth, oh.
Twenty-eighth is a Thursday, you'll be exhausted, was it, twenty-ninth?
Twenty-eighth is a Wednesday.
Right, the twenty-ninth.
No, I'm sorry, we're probably gonna sign on twenty-ninth.
Okay, there you go.
I, the last day of February is, I don't.
Then we realize it's this tour. Well, it's only the Friday is March first.
Did we move that?
Why do we move it to twelve?
We could do Friday first.
Holidays and stuff.
I know, you're gonna have car travel.
So, March first is the Friday that week, even though you'd be exhausted.
Can we do the following, I'm gonna be in the car driving.
Okay, and then we're going into the first round of interviews, so we would, I mean, maybe we would bring everything up a week.
Can we move it if we're gonna do anything? Can we move it so we have to have our board meetings for finance, curriculum, and, you know, put it that? Because if I have to fly, if we have to fly back for anything, I'd rather package it around the same time, so that I'm not, you know, and then we're not interrupting yours and.
So your board meeting in February is when?
It was the twelfth.
You guys' subcommittee is at the fifth through the tenth, is it through the night?
Oh, I'm saying, I'm saying our board meeting is why not, not the subcommittee, sorry, yeah, yeah.
The board meeting is supposed to be the twelfth.
So if we potentially did the interview, yeah, the candidates on the thirteenth, I'll stay away from the fourteenth in case it may have hot dates or something. We could, we could look at thirteenth or fifteenth, something like that? Would that, would that meet your schedule then?
Yeah, I mean, thirteenth would definitely be better. And I'm gonna be, I'll be flying back for it, which I, I always have to, I do it anyway, but.
On the twelfth, right?
Yeah, I'll fly back on Sunday, then I guess I can fly back on Tuesday, but if you do this day, then I can go back.
Yes, I can.
But are we talking about looking through applications?
That's the question.
I look for application for long meeting.
Right, so we'll, we'll look at, right now on my calendar, it looks like the thirteenth would work, and I can adjust the other dates to do that. As a secondary, I just put potentially the fifteenth, but we'll try to do the thirteenth.
But that means you're moving up your post day meeting, so you're shorting by two weeks and you're comfortable with that?
We will, we will adjust things on the calendar, make sure it fits, yeah. But yeah, it's not, once upon a time, with everything going to placement offices at universities and that, it was eight to ten to twelve-week posting period. With technology now, we can put it out there, people are waiting and looking at it, it's gonna be cool. We could shorten it down to four weeks and be fine with that many districts at the time. So we'll, we'll make that work.
Do you anticipate that being like an afternoon meeting to be eaten in meetings?
That is totally up to you when you wanna do that meeting.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, something about teaching. Yeah, suppose I keep an eye on that. But yeah, if, if you could start at four o'clock or something, I don't know if you can get here by that time, four o'clock, and, and do something like that. So let's do that a four P M. meeting then, we'll come on that, does that work for everybody else? So we can set that one. Typically, the district would supply some light snacks or food or whatever, because again, they're not long. Now, I say that, it'd be a very short meeting, but that's all right, I thought you'd be wrong in that one. So yeah, I will adjust the dates on that, I will get a new calendar up to you the next day or so, and if you take a look at it, if you see any complications, please let me know, it's in the slide, so we can get this solidified, not only on my calendar, but on your calendars, and that way Val will be able to keep up the postings and so forth, as we require as well. Okay, and how, if we went to thirteenth, that would meet your?
That'd be perfect.
Okay.
My turn, probably for you too, yeah.
All right, so that's, that's not a problem, and then we could still, what about moving up those interviews? Well, you gotta, probably not.
Right, we just have a little longer gap.
Yeah, a little longer gap there, which is just fine, because of mid-winter breaks and other things that go on. Okay, we will, we'll make that work then. Anything else you need from me? Version four will be in your mind.
I'll tell one fact today, bro.
All right.
Thank you so much, Dave. All right. Up next, we have a President's meeting on the bond, but we gave this. All right, well, thank you. First thing I'd like to, I'm gonna have members of our bond team, which includes our partners from our construction and equipment, as well as the two architect firms, and of course, the, our internal staff. So I'm gonna have them introduce themselves real quick, and then we'll, we'll bring you to the presentation, that, great.
Yeah, Matt holds up project manager for O A K., so I help facilitate the construction on the design side, or actually making dust in the classrooms, and then walking the jobs afterwards. So I'm kind of a, you're a super nuts, and then our other O A K. team member?
I'm Kevin Huffdahl, I'm a pre-construction partner, so I'm working with the architects early on, helping develop the cost, so that's, that's kind of my task in this whole thing.
My name is Tom Taylor, I'm representing Tower Pines here, one of the design officials of your team.
Chris Arson, I'm kind of the counterpart of G M E., leaving the other side of the thing, and I'm getting that super nuts kind of beginning of all the fall process this team.
I'm speaking there in operations, so, you know, Julie and I were involved early on, through the process design, pre-designed, then I did a value design, I actually go get, I'm there as a N B A designer.
You guys are a little too fast.
Well, we are, actually, we're still, we're talking.
We all have a spy witness who was up here earlier.
Is it right there on the bottom? I can on the bottom?
It's on my screen.
Where are we going, Julie? Let's make sure that's live.
So we can second screen over there.
That's better. Hey, we did it! All right, well, thank you. Thanks for being here today, and we're allowing you the opportunity, and our team opportunity to really share about our bond proposal that you have a consideration on place agenda. So just a little bit of bond basics. So with a bond election, ballot language is intentionally broad. So it talks about being able to renovate, or being able to do additions, being able to do something with playgrounds, with athletic facilities. What you don't see is, we're going to renovate Ada Elementary, or we're going to do, you know, this type of facility. So the broad, the ballot language is meant to be broad. And what we really are doing is we're requesting a total amount for an identified set of projects. So we're not just saying, hey, here's a stellar amount, we're not quite sure what we're gonna do with the community, will you please approve if that's the ballot language? And then some important things related to communication, you know, several of you who are new to the board haven't gone through this process, but uh, district funded materials and employees, such as myself, we can only really put out factual information to the community. Um, I can go out and say, hey, will you vote yes, uh, to community member, I can only give the facts, you know? And then talking with Dr. Shewell, they, she really has a great phrase that, um, she used in her former district, which was educate and not advocate. So that's what school district employees can do, as well as district funded materials, if you think about, um, flyers that need to be sent out, or email communication, that's what we can do. As a board member, though, you can do both, you can educate and advocate, so you can go out in, share with them what this bond proposal is about, and also try to garner support for that from the election. Um, bonds are typically issued in a single series or multiple series, so you can get authorization for a valid amount, and then um, you've really worked on some hindrances work and have looked at, does that mean we can issue that all at once? Or do you spread that out over a certain time period? Um, a fact is that when you get that authorization, there is no timeframe to actually even, um, issue bonds, right? You're just getting that initial authorization, you can wait five years, you can wait ten years, if you think, uh, couple of years ago, I think Ann Arbor has a really huge bond in their community, and it was meant to go out for a long number of years. They got that authorization, I think it was like a billion or something like that, so you don't have to do the opposite, uh, issue it right away. Um, and tax rates are impacted when the bonds are actually sold, so again, you're getting that, you're allowed to spend up to the selling amount, but you're issuing those bonds in series, and you're not letting the taxes to pay back those bonds until they're actually sold. Um, once they're sold, that's when the clock starts ticking, and you have eighty-five, uh, for years, you said eighty-five percent of those bonds. Um, after that, there's really no timeframe, and remaining fifteen percent is done back. Um, and then you have seen this, you should see this in our financial, financial statement, so you report the revenue, and any of these expenditures related to these projects are one, the other projects one. We set up a separate projects fund specifically, so series of bonds are sold, okay? Questions on bond basics?
I have just a question about the tax rates that are impacted, and the bonds are sold, what if you have, I mean, I, I mentioned before, we have a recession problem, meaning this next year, things are gonna go up, so that would be not a good time to sell a bond, correct?
Right, exactly, yep, that's exactly, those are the things we all get, Hallie, right, that's a good point.
Okay. You just kind of use your pulse on that.
Right. To, you know, let's say we go out, and we get authorization for a community, and we, and part of it is we're anticipating selling bonds in twenty twenty six, making that up, right? And all of a sudden, the, the bond falls out, and taxable values, uh, decline significantly. We would step back and look at, and we would work with our financial advisors, and we'd say, all right, this might not be the best time. If we did go out, what does it do? Oh, it's gonna spike the tax rate, and, and Forest Hills has always wanted to not do that, right? That's always been our stance, is to not increase the tax rate for any of our capital improvement projects. So we'd probably pause and say, I think we're gonna delay those projects, we're just gonna have to wait, wait for that taxable value to recover and find that time where we can do that and not increase that tax rate. All right, so bond information specific to what you're considering today, um, so we're requesting, uh, an election date for August the seventh, number seven. Um, the total bond request is three hundred and forty million dollars. Um, we have worked through, and we would issue that three hundred and forty million dollars in multiple series. A lot of money is done at once, and that's really that second, uh, bullet in that third column. Our projects are extended through twenty thirty-one, and part of the reason for that is that financial, it's really a little bit of what we just talked about, right? We, we went out and issued three hundred and forty million dollars of bonds at once, we would definitely be spiking our tax rate in our community. Um, you would also have issues on community capacity side, right? Steve could not manage, um, in our system, or myself, all of those projects that we'd be doing at the same time, right? The same thing would be true for our construction managers, for our competitors, they don't have the human capacity to lead us through all the design work, lead us through all the construction, um, that would just be technically, and nor would our, uh, subcontractors, right? If people were actually doing that work, um, once, uh, a project is approved, um, they would have the capacity, or they would be charging us a lot of extra money to do those projects. So that's why we spaced the projects out, um, and, uh, the good news is, is there's no tax rate increase expected for the first year.
Do we look like this is the first year after the November seventh, so no increase till the following November seventh, is that how it works, or is it the time that you touch?
It would be for the first time we sell the bonds, so, and we would look to probably sell the first little bit right away in twenty-four, so that's how we're able to save our tax rate. Great question. Um, here's our tax rate history, um, back in two thousand thirteen, we were lugging seven point nine mils. Um, for the debt tax rate that we lugged, that's on all properties, so that includes your primary residence, so your home, you're paying that as a, a homeowner in the district, as well as, um, what we call our non-home space, our businesses and that type of thing, so everybody would get lugged at this tax rate, um. Which you can see, um, because of a multitude of reasons, maybe they've been paying off old debt, our taxable value growth has helped us, um, but we've been able to, uh, reduce that tax rate over the years. All right, so an important, uh, question and answer for you is, how did we get to this point? How did we get to this list of proposed projects? Who did we hear from? Where did we gather this information? So I want to spend a little bit of time on this slide and really talk through that, so, um, we've been hearing things throughout the community, probably since the last bond was even passed, probably before the last bond was even passed, things that they maybe didn't include in our twenty eighteen bond, about, uh, needs, and they run the rabbit of, of what those were, until those are conversations that the superintendents had with, uh, residents in our community, um, conversations that we've had at our parent advisory council meetings, um, with our life boosters, um. So those are kind of some of the places that we've heard, hey, what about this, right? And especially with our two thousand eighteen bond and some of those renovations we've done, when is my building next, right? When do I get the learning, right? We've seen the great things that we've done at Orchard View, and Thornpool, and Collins, and that cool space over there, and High. Everyone's trying to start the plan, we're like, okay, when is my school done? And so it's those comments that we've been hearing, those conversations, um, that we started to drive the work that we need to do next, and that we're proposing in this bond. Um, in addition to that, we did, uh, walkthroughs of all the facilities, uh, folks that are over here today were a part of that walkthrough, um, as well as some others, our principals, our athletic directors, um, some of our other district staff, as well as our technology design consultants. We walked through all of our facilities to say, what's next, and we had a conversation about, I gave them a pattern guided questions. What are your pain points in the building, right, when structurally, uh, things have changed, so what are those pain points? What are those things that you don't want to change, right? It's working well, please don't touch this. Um, and then what's that wish list? If the sky was the limit, here's what we'd love to do with this building, right? So we heard all of those conversations, we gathered that information as a group, um, and then started to work through that. And of course, some of the things that you've been seeing is, excuse me, lifecycle replacement for the hand systems, aided and abiding, right? Those we need to stay on capo, um, because we don't want to have to use our general operating funds to do those replacements, or those repairs, or keep those repairs to a minimum, that's it. That stakeholder input makes sense? Questions, honey? All right, so from that, we then developed really broad specifications, right? We wanna continue updating our learning environment, sorry, we're a little far out on the side. Um, and another goal with this bond is really to try to create some equity in our facilities, athletic facilities and processes, which is, we've heard before, I think before I was even here, um, about that, um, you know, if you look at Northern, Eastern, they've been clamoring for a second artificial turf field, an auxiliary turf field. Um, so we're gonna hit what, um, projects are proposed in this, um, but you'll see that, so, um, again, that fact gathering was helping us to identify the broad specifications. Um, and then from there, we turned it over to, um, our architects, and they kind of did, and we talked about this in the committee meetings. Um, if you think of the learning awareness, they took out the floor map of the school, and based on what we heard, um, from those meetings with the, the building principals and stuff, so then they kind of did a bold, diagramming on each of those facilities, that, okay, this would be a heavy construction area, this might be a light construction area. Um, and so the maps that they use to help, um, guide the next one, which is get all of these budget estimates, and our construction manager would pull that information together for us. Um, so then, once we were kind of narrowing on on that, we looked at, what is our system's debt capacity? How do we do this? What's, what's that ceiling for us, so that we don't, um, spike our tax rate, right? And that we can get this work done, um, and timing that with the retirement of our, some of our old debt, you know? Anticipating, you know, small and concerning taxable value property, uh, growth. So those were all the things that we did to get us to this point for our projects. All right? All right, let's go through our projects. So we got, uh, a slide for everything that we're doing, so. So it's like at Ada, uh, Elementary, we're going to update their learning environment, what that looks like, we don't know, right? All of that detailed design work, upon approval from our community, will start, um, for our projects. We have been mapped out about when that will happen, um, so, you know, as, as we're going through that, we'll start that detailed trying work. So we wanna do the learning environment at Ada, we also need to touch the mechanical, um, paving in some areas, and, um, playground, and we're gonna see playground in all of our elementary schools. And this is one of the things that we pulled from, uh, a conversation that we had in one of our parent advisory council meetings. They were really interested in, uh, not completely revamping our playgrounds, we did a little bit of that work when I first started here in back in two thousand fourteen. They're looking for maybe a piece or two of equipment that might be a little bit more accessible for all students, if you think about it, students have heavens to be in a wheelchair, or the students on crutches, or something that's a little bit more challenging, so that's our goal with the playground, so you're gonna see that theme throughout all of our elementary schools. Um, for Ada Lisa, we're already in the works for their learning environment, which is really exciting for that space. Um, so we really only need to touch roofing, mechanical, and paving, um, for that. Collins is done, so again, they would just get a little bit of paving, they're looking for great shape, knock on wood, um, and their playground. Um, at Forest, uh, learning environments, probably not a ton of learning environments for there, right? It's one of our newer schools, and it's in really great shape, and they really did have a lot of them, would be a little bit of work and, um, a wish list in there, um, and that's mechanical work in that forest as well. All right, over at Meadowbrook, learning environments, um, mechanical paving and again, a playground, Orchard View, that beautiful building, we just need to do some mechanical and some paving. Heinrich just started here in June, so same thing for them, mechanical paving, and Thornpool Sun, so mechanical paving. All right, a five-six building, so we hit those learning environments at those three facilities, um, and then you can see the mechanical for the ones, mechanical paving for the trails, little bit of roofing, and a little bit of mechanical, um, for the Willie, um, and then Central Middle, and it works right now too for their learning environment, so we would just, uh, do some mechanical paving work with them. Northern Hills Middle, learning environments, we wanna hit that space, and roofing and mechanical. Uh, Eastern Middle, um, circling there and doing their learning environment, you know, we did a little bit over there, um, a couple of years ago, when we took that addition, over on the end for the, uh, art and industrial arts program, and then took those existing spaces and made them traditional classrooms. Um, we've got a little bit more work to do in that building. Um, Central High, we've got a lot of work to do in that building for learning environment, so pretty excited, um, to, to leave into that one. Um, they would also need some roofing, and that, and that, Eastern, so I say I miss the additional access drive. So one of the things that we did, and we're just gonna pause right here, because this is something that I talked about with the board president the other day, and when we were looking at this list of product, uh, projects, and talked about, um, athletics and the need for a, a five turf field at Eastern, one of the things that we did is we stepped back for both Eastern and Northern, and we decided we needed to create a site master plan. Um, and just so that we're really deliberate about where we're going to put this, uh, site and turf field at those two locations. And in particular, over at Eastern, um, several years ago, uh, that forest was a little bit tight, we were using classrooms that, classroom space, the bedroom, you know? We were using rooms that weren't really designed for instruction in class, or full classrooms, Scott knows, he has a pencil there. Um, so we pulled together a task force to look at that and say, how do we help alleviate that a little bit? And that's where we ended up meeting a sixth grader over at Eastern Middle. Um, the community was wondering, no, well, why can't we have a five-six building? Central has one, Northern has one. Um, so what we decided to do when we, we got to this point, enrollment didn't allow for it at that time, um, what we decided to at this point is, it was really important for us to kind of help set the district up for success in the future, right? If for some reason enrollment changes, and right now, we, we've had that conversation about, you know, there's an enrollment deadline, and, and the birth rate's a little bit lower. Um, but if for some reason that changes, or if for some reason, um, Ada Township changes, um, their granters, and they allow, uh, smaller parcels than what they have right now, we could experience some growth. And so we wanna be prepared that site for, if there does, um, our, anytime we have a need for a five-six building, but we've been deliberate about our planning. Um, so we did a site master plan for there, and then part of that site master plan is really to alleviate some of the, um, traffic issues that we have. If you've ever been around Eastern, um, in the morning and in the afternoon, they could back up on pedestals a lot. Um, so part of this, uh, proposed project is to create additional access drive off of pedestals that we would use probably for students to come in and out, and then we'd have a parent drop-off thing, so we're hoping that slaying that up will help alleviate some of that.
Will that affect parking too? Because having visitor parking over in that student lab is not horribly effective, that would be one thing to think about, can we talk about that in the late nights?
Yeah, that'd be like a scary thing, right? Do you want to desert a certain number of spots?
Yes.
Yeah, so those are things that we would consider, yeah, for sure. Um, and at Central High, we've got a lot to do there with learning environments, roofing, and mechanical, and paving. Um, at Central High, outdoor athletics, um, we would propose to turf the baseball and softball fields, um, to get better access to them. And we would look to expand the task force, there's a desire, um, by our athletic directors to try to help our student athletes. Um, when you look at post regular season competitions, we're always going somewhere else, right? Because there are minimum standards for M H S M A to host, uh, regionals, districts, and states. Um, and so there's a desire, um, in our athletic community to, hey, we try to keep some of those home and, and give our students, uh, student athletes a light up. So that's what expanding the task force would be, um, we'd also look to light that, uh, auxiliary turf field, there's not lighting there right now, so we would do that, to be able to use that field later into the evening. At Eastern High, um, again, learning environments, some roofing, paving, there's that additional access drive. Um, for their lights, um, that site master plan would call for, in the current location where the baseball and softball fields are, we'd actually, we would actually put our five-six building. It's easier for access drive, it, it kinda, it, you could separate it a little bit, right, from the high school, middle school traffic. So, um, that would cause us to relocate our, uh, softball and baseball fields, we would turf those. The other thing there is, um, when those fields were put in, baseball and softball fields, um, I believe it was kind of a, a last minute, when we changed from that being a theme school to a practical baseball school, they put the fields in, and they, there was a standard direction for athletic fields, whether it's a football field, or it's a baseball and softball field. So they were put in the wrong direction, that, that is.
They didn't do that.
Okay. There is a standard for, for baseball field, so, so part of this relocation will also help, uh, show those and pack them facing our way, because if our batters should not be facing into the sun, is that what it is?
That's right, so we're in this manner, it's, uh, third base of home by our organization, so.
Okay, all right. Um, and then we also expanded task force here, and then we would add that auxiliary turf field. Over at Northern High, you could continue with the learning environments, right? We've got that great space for projects, not physical, and we wanna do, uh, more work in the vastest of buildings, um, so we're playing the chemical, a little bit of paving there. Um, for their outdoor athletics, um, we would turf their softball, baseball fields as well, standard tennis courts, added turf field, and stadium improvements. I think we've heard, um, at, at a couple of board meetings, and we haven't been to their stadium before, you might not know that, but we've heard at a couple of board meetings, some of our residents have had concerns about the stadium and like stadium improvements, so we would do that as well. So we would do that as well. Alright, and then some of our ancillary buildings. We've heard for a while now was from our swim community, whether it's swimming or water polo, that there's a need for a new sheet of water. Our current facility, that was 1990. So it was great in its heyday, right? But it's time. It's time to get a new one. And our goal with this one as well is to be able to meet those qualifications for MHSMA and be able to post regular season, keeping our sheet athletes close to home. So we would look to build a new aquatic center. And our plan is it would be on the same campus as the current one, just in a new space there. We retain our current community aquatic center facility, but we would fill in that pool. And it's expensive to operate a pool. So maintaining multiple sheets of water is a lot as well. Right now, we really struggle on the staffing side for lifeguards with our current pool. So adding additional sheets of water, you know, we just want to be cutting some of that. So we'd fill in that current pool and repurpose that, have no vision of what that is yet, but we know we would do that. And then we would update for the later facility. Over at Fine Arts Center, update portions of that facility. It's really in great shape. It's really held up well, but there are some things that we need to do and we need to do some roofing and mechanical. Our food service facility, if you don't know where this is at, this is off of Altadale, right by Fulton. It's right next to our operations building and we just, we need to get a generator over there so we get power. It's just we're not having lots of food and we need to just work anything. And the last three projects are, we need to do a little bit of work and update our transportation facilities and roofing and mechanical. And of course, these last two are things that you've seen, right? We want to make sure we're updating our technology and life cycle replacement, our infrastructure, our equipment and devices and everything tech. And then our offices, we like to continue to do life cycle replacement for them. Alright, so those were our projects. Communication, what does communication look like? So before the bond, we've been doing a little bit of that. And we've talked about it in our board meetings as we've been updating up to date as we move along with this process. We've had, we've given a couple of presentations at our parent advisory committee. So they're know that the district is coming out with a new bond. They want their learning environment updated. We've actually done some of they call V-roll, I'm not sure why they call it V-roll, but they've done some V-roll shots of our students and activities when school was in session at the very end in preparation for your authorization to put this on to the ballot in our community's table of ballots. So we've done that work. But upon authorization from you, because really when we start hitting this really heavy, we have a what we call a bond communication team. So our members who are here are a part of that, some people who are a part of their organizations are in that and are really working through, what does that look like? What are, you know, the phrases that we want to use for our 2018 bond? For example, we used invest, secure, inspire. Are we gonna stick with that? You have to know heads up, we aren't gonna use the word invest because we've been told we cannot use the word invest anymore. It's too close to make it look like you're wanting them to say yes in here. So, you know, we work with legal counsel on all of our material that we distribute. We give it to them in advance. They go through it and make sure that we're compliant, that we're educating and not advocating. So we'll do that work. But we'll have a variety of methods that we'll be communicating with our families, right? And it's not exhaustive and it may or may not be all the things that we do. But we'll have our informational newsletters. We'll have those bond visual boards in each of the buildings so that as families come into buildings, they can see here are the things that are expected at my school. And we can roll open houses. We can open up some of our learning environments that we've just done. So, hey, come and take a look. This is what we need. When we say you want to update and renovate our buildings, this is what we're looking at, on the orchard view. We might create some videos for our families that we can disseminate that all of these things that we put on our website.
Would the foundation help in communicating about that?
Yes, and that being something that we could, we could look at. Having them help us out with that as well. Meetings, you know, we can hold a community meeting or two or three or whatever that looks like, right? Have just have an open meeting for them to come on. We did that for the 2018 bond, remember, being a psycho looker, white our community head. We will be creating, this one we know we will do meeting for sure. We will be creating staff and district talking points. We want to make sure that our employees understand, love that phrase, educate and not advocate, right? So, and we want them to know what's going on. So we'll create those talking points for them. You know, a frequently asked question sheet. So we'll hold some of that that we did for the 2018 and then what are some of the things that we've been hearing since then? Maybe there are things that you have been asked and you're like, hey Julie, I think this has been very planned to be on, put on that app. If you let me know, please. Because we want to make sure that we are educating our communities so that when they're, when they go to the poll on your authorization, that they have the right information to make the best decision. Of course, there's always more that I'm not thinking of because I am not a marketing person. Alright, just hammering this part home for everybody, that we use a system as a district communication. Our staff and our material has to educate and be factual. Useful members to get the luxury of doing those very factual statements. That is one I have to do. Questions here?
Obviously, it's a good question. This, I mean, this, and it's, I won't be a thorn in this piece, but I draw on all the projects. Turfing softball, baseball fields, just resonates with me a little bit. I get the idea of getting outside a little earlier in the spring. Football auxiliary fields make sense. Those could be used for a million things. Essentially, just our baseball and softball teams use those fields and we have to do six of them. That just seems like a lot of money to get two sports on a field, a couple. Again, not that I'm saying we should not do it or put it in, but I just want to understand, is that just what everybody does now? I mean, we'd be way behind if we didn't have turf softball fields for our one or two softball teams.
Yeah, there's a real lot of things for that too, so you have to evaluate that. But yeah, they're becoming multipurpose fields, so you can really beat the tower out of them, so to speak.
Sure.
But with baseball and softball especially, the weather's been an issue where people can't play. So the way that these fields, synthetic surface can deal with water.
They don't rain, yeah.
It's, I mean, it's immediate.
And that's a problem, I mean, because baseball fields for a hundred years have dealt with rain and sleet and blah, blah, blah. We can't sell it even, and that's worth $20 million or something to avoid, you know. I just, you know, that's my own money. I just want to understand, man.
And those cost differences? When you, when you look at the cost difference between artificial turf and actual turf or real grass. They're giving a lot more.
Okay, so it's not crazy.
So it's not like you're spending a ton of money to do that. Especially if you get the, at Eastern, for instance, you have a new little field. That, it's a no rent at that point. But then you have to look at, you're actually looking at district, not all the school beds, so.
Well, and also, I don't even know, does Eastern High School's team, do they even use those fields as their home field? They don't, right? They go to track.
Yeah, it's because of solar angles and stuff. It's a disadvantage for your athletes when you're looking at the sun's coming down, the last thing they're looking at and trying to get.
So these two fields that like are field hockey, are lacrosse, soccer, football are on these fields.
Well, on the ball, auxiliary.
The older, the older you can march on, you have to under dress as well. So yeah, and I don't know how you involve your players, some gear programs and all that, and maybe even your youth sports.
I say youth sports in particular, soccer, little kids soccer teams use softball and baseball fields. Because it's a large enough space for them.
Well, that was what I was gonna say about whether it's becoming more common. We have a client over a kela ago, just their landlord. So they actually use theirs for gym classes and stuff like that. So you grew up there and you're not destroying the field. Every road in the world, okay, like often, but.
Like, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but you can't go back to.
That's what I mean, now we look at every high school, have a full-size turf football field, auxiliary turf field, softball turf field, baseball turf field. Like, I don't think we'll be lacking four outside turf area for classes and for other things to use in those first two. So that's just, you know, I mean, seeing, do we use the outfield and the baseball field for a lot of stuff right now, other than baseball games?
How many different sports do we have? I don't know that number. Thirty?
varsity sport?
Not thirty-two or thirty-seven.
Sure, but.
Some varsity freshmen. It's, the spring is probably the most difficult athletic season and there is because it's short. The weather's not always the best, right? And it's dark, there's no sun, right? And so athletic facilities are at a premium in the spring and everything is outside.
Yeah.
All the spring sports are outside. So it, they will be well-used.
I'd say, I think, it's a great question because I have the same question of like, I never see anybody out on the baseball and softball fields using them for anything else ever, like, they just seem to sit there empty. So I, I understand the question of like, is that, the best use of, you know, I mean, it's, it's gonna be part of the conversation. Like, I guess a question I have is with regard to all of those projects that we saw. And I sort of asked you about this the other day, but I want to make sure I understood and everybody else here hears it. Is, is this set of, I know you had me come up with, these are the plans and this is how much does this get cost to work up to get your money, your total dollar value, because you can't just say, oh, we need a blank check. Like, that's not gonna happen. Yeah, are the individual projects in there somewhat flexible? Like, if you come up and go, you know what, we were gonna do a turf field over there, but actually, this thing has come up as being much more important. Can, can those discussions still be had and go, oh, we're gonna do this instead?
Yep, they can. Here would be the challenge, right, with the community, that's that to this school community. So let's just go with that thought and say, you know, we decided we're not going to turf the baseball and softball fields in Northern. And we're gonna take those dollars and redirect them to Eastern to do something else. I don't know why, right? When we are educating our community about, here's what we'd like to do with this money and here are the projects. That's a real hard and difficult conversation that we can't have it, because the toddler, their community, well, we're really not gonna do that project anymore because now we feel like this one over here at Eastern is more important. Well, just a little information, as you just said, that the costs are very similar at this point. Just to know what the cost differences are between a grass and turf. Just in case that kind of conversation comes up where people are like, why are we, like, why are we putting money toward this?
Well, again, the only new, I think, will make sense and that would be justified, I think, to take the current field that we've got, which aren't grass, which have been grass forever, and add $10 million each of those, or $5 million or whatever it is to turf those. Again, I, I'm a, I'm a spring athlete, a spring coach, like, all this stuff. I get it all. It's just, if we only had to make two of them, if we just had one, I still will, like, you know, you don't, no rent to get with the times. But now we gotta have that, we gotta make six of them. And so that's just a lot of millions of dollars and, right, the community obviously can decide if they, if they want that or not, of course. I just wanted to see.
So we will give you guys talking points as well. And then those bond boards will be more detailed than probably what you saw in the 2018. Like, they're, the 2018 was pretty, just raw. They all looked the same, right? These ones will be specific and we'll identify some of those things. Okay, we're going to do the learning environment. We anticipate a cost rounded in millions, right? This many millions of dollars and we're going to add the turf field and do the turf, the baseball field. This is about how much this will cost. So they don't be on those bond boards. That's our plan right now is that we'll communicate that. But we'll also give you guys a talking place because we know you're going to be out there, you're gonna be asking for me. And we want you to be advocating, right? Because you can do that, so we want you to have the information so that you can answer as many questions as you can. Are you in order in your head already, a rough order of what happens first and last? Yeah, we do. Yeah, and we would, we would put that on the bond boards as well. You know, we anticipate it would be here, of course, things change, right? So that we may, you know, have to delay something in terms of, you know, some of those are easy to say, it's a good delay, right? If, if the roof is in a decent condition, I'm not just gonna rip it and replace it because in 2027, we end on our assessment.
We're gonna do that.
Yeah, you know, that doesn't make sense, right? So some of those things could be adjusted and put that, the information would be.
I have some quick questions on the tennis courts. Like, are we, are we gonna be able to play another sport? Like, football's kind of up on the rising, you know, I would foresee in the future that that's gonna be a sport that we're gonna probably bring it in. It's the community, I mean, it seems like everywhere it goes, everybody's playing football now. Is that, I mean, I know they have to do stuff, but maybe the course that we're putting in, are we kind of projecting that they would still be able to use for that purpose, okay?
Yeah, it would be a big decision by you guys if you wanted to do that or not. Because then it depends when you need to use it versus your athletes. So all those factors go in. But yeah, football's easy, but it's a small, right?
So this is when we actually started having that conversation. So that is trying to balance that, right? Right now, we struggled at some of our sites and then we've had, for example, our gym classes have gone out to use the task force and then there's somebody offering to write a lesson on it and it's, well, you can't use it right now, I'm offering a lesson. I'm like, wait. So, so those are challenges, right? And so we get to balance, would that make that worse, right? Or do we just continually, like, we have to remind our community, okay, during the day, right? These facilities are, we're in school hours, right? These facilities are for our students and then after athletics, because we want to make sure athletic teams are able to use those that, that we need to use.
I just think the community, you know, I mean, if you're gonna propose a bond, it would be nice to know, like, hey, you're gonna be able to, you know, put a calendar like we do for the pool in place for the community to be able to actually use the facility that, you know, we're passing the bond on, you know, for that, but.
Yeah, that's what you should put on top of that building pool, pick up our course. There you go.
Yeah. And their football, it would be good.
I have a question with the, like, I think you mentioned with the tennis courts, but like, with these fields that are going in and the baseball and the football, or the baseball and softball. Is what you're proposing, would that allow district, state championships to go there too? Are they gonna be made to those specs so that you could host tennis or baseball championships here, which we currently cannot?
I mean, just say publish as a document, which is the recommended guidelines for all your sports. And four stills, I think, if one or three of state that have all the sports. So we will take that into consideration without the size of your soccer, your auxiliary soccer. So if you put women's lacrosse, men's lacrosse, soccer, you know, a lot of other stuff, so don't be a doubt. And then we'll follow standards for it, hopefully.
And then I guess one last comment I have on it is, one thing that, that I've been trying to work through as we talked about this over the months is the transparency of how this gets done. Like, there are definitely sports out there that need help, that need work, that, and they don't, they're like, oh, wait, there's a bond going out? Well, we actually need this and we don't know who to talk to. You know, like, there are just, there are groups out there that are like, have you seen our facility? This is unacceptable and are we on the bond? And I'm like, well, um, no, your, your facility isn't among the ones specifically listed. And it, well, how do we get, how do we get so people know that we need stuff? And I'm like, I don't know. And like, and I don't know what to tell them because I don't even really understand the progress of it. And then I know you say, oh, we talked to the boosters and the, you know, some parent groups and stuff. But I, I feel like the, the overall plan and the awareness and how this sausage gets made is not particularly clear.
Well, part of that too was, you know, we talked about facility walk-throughs and we engage with our athletic directors, right? And in their conversations with their coaches, you know, there obviously has to be a priority list of, okay, here are the things that we would like to see in this round. So, you know, relying on, on that information, you know, the conversations I had or the walk-throughs with the AEs, relying on them having these conversations with their coaches saying, okay, here's, here's our current priorities for our facilities. Here are the needs that we think that needs to be met first in this round of bonds. So those are those conversations.
I don't know that I'm aware of any AEs having a coaches meeting going, hey, let's talk about this.
I don't know, I, I can't talk with.
So again, again, the whole process, the process just seems a little weird. So like, you know, I understand that, you know, like the, okay, like for instance with baseball. Okay, the third line, sideline, it's, you know, during certain days, at certain hours, when the sun hits, players have a hard time seeing the downwind line. Okay, that seems to me like that affects, you know, when the sun happens to be here for these particular days and it's a very small thing. Whereas, I'm, I'll just draw up this example because I know this one. The crew facility, the boathouse gets flooded under six feet of water every year and they can't get to the boats. Like, that seems like a bigger deal to me than, oh, the sun's in my eyes for a couple of minutes. How, how do people, like, on a different team that isn't like necessarily in the eye as much? You know, field hockey or something could be another one where it's just not as well-known, it's, but it's, you know, it's a whole thing. How do they make their needs known so that they rise up to be able to have the issues that they need for their particular? for their particular facilities wrapped?
And I would say, you know, that that's coaches maybe having those conversations with their athletic directors. I mean, if if there if there's a challenge, right, and it's an ongoing challenge and it's not just a one-time wood type thing, they really need to be having those conversations with the AEs to say, hey, we're struggling here. This is an issue. Every year we're doing this. Is there something that can be done about this?
That's a very good point, you know, and so was it? If it wasn't, the AEG would only communicate what they know, right?
Now, one of the things that, you know, we we talked about this on Monday, and one of the things that, you know, I mentioned, I said, okay, these are all estimates, right? And we built in um inflation factors because who knows what things are gonna cost like in twenty twenty six, for example. So, um, you know, we've done some estimating and so we just really think that cost increase might be up here. Um if costs come in different, they come in better, and there's some savings from some of those projects. They're big and broad uh ballot language, and that's what's, um, you see that in your resolution today. Would allow for us to step back and say, hey, we have some savings from turfing softball and baseball fields at these schools. And so now we have a little bit extra money and and what do we want to do with this group? And that would be something that we'd step back and say, okay, what's next? What's next on the list? What can we do? Let's try to address that that crew boathouse out there.
Is it possible to put projects like that in the in the wings per se or not? Or is that just so people, you know, I mean, like, just kind of list new upcoming projects for if, you know, if we meet whatever our expectations or things are lower,
Yeah, oh, for sure. Yeah.
You know, that that so at least people can kind of see that that these these are the ones that are on deck per se, like next, so.
Yes. Yeah, it's almost kind of you really need both how you write, what are the on-deck items if things are better? And then what if we're gonna have to pause if things are worse, right? You're gonna have the both those words. But I love I love that idea. So we can certainly do that.
Can I ask another miscellaneous one very quickly? Um are music instruments and equipment bondable things?
They are.
Those can be paid in this one?
Yeah, so in the ballot language, um, it talks about equipping and re-equipping school buildings. And that would be considered re-equipping school buildings. Um so not necessarily set aside in this and what we talked about today. A lot of times what happens is, um, you know, you sell the bonds and they're earning some interest.
Yeah.
And so then you're getting a little extra money. And then that those are the types of things that come up that you're like, hey, you know, we need a new base over at Northern High. Oh, great. I've got a little extra money from the interest that we can use to, like, those are the types of things.
Yeah. So I wonder if it's not verbiage, would it even vote well in the community if it if it was part of the community, you know, for our arts stuff or whatever?
Yeah. Yeah, yes, that re-equipping is something that we are equipping.
Yeah. Okay.
I have one question. Your slide, it's about when in two thousand thirteen, we were at seven point nine. Have you worked up to about six point oh five? Is that what I saw?
Yes.
So you made the comment that the rate will not go up in the first year. Is it gonna go up at some point?
No.
Okay.
We would, no. Um in in our preliminary production, right, as we crystal ball the whole thing and and we're pretty conservative when it comes to taxable value growth. We really um look, we keep it at two and a half percent, which is really low. Um because we'd rather be on that side than the other. Um so we're really deliberate about, okay, with that growth, with the retirement of existing debt, right? As we work through those debt schedules, um, we know that we're gonna have a small one come off here in twenty twenty four. And we know the next one after that is twenty twenty seven, I believe. Um so then what we do is we look at when uh what's our cash flow, right? Here's our list of projects. Here's when we manage to save, we'll we'll lay money because we're gonna start to do design work. And then we're gonna start to break ground and do construction. When we need that money, so, um, okay, provide us with a monthly cash flow. Um with that information, we work and advise to say, okay, here's a monthly cash flow. When we issue our bond series, right, and to meet the cash flow needs and to not spike the tax rate based on uh conservative taxable value. So our goal is always not spike debt taxes.
It will stay on six oh five.
It it will probably, right now, we're projecting those stay at six point zero five for a few years.
And then what?
And then we'll be able to round it a little bit.
Wow, okay.
Because over the long run, tax, you know, probably guys always go up.
Property values will go up right in the and we'll be paying off more debt.
If it costs. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. So those debt combination allows us to hold a little bit steady and then, you know, take some little dips and then. All right.
Thanks, you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for all the, uh, lover.
And thank you everybody for coming in. It is really exciting to see like all the different projects that you have and works and um just never stop, better research.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Um, do we wanna take like a small, like, three-minute break so that people stretch their wings and hopefully?
Thanks for being here for a long year.
Thank you, yeah. All right, we'll take a three-minute break. Okay. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Can I have a motion to consider the consent grouping, please?
I will motion that we consider the consent grouping.
Uh, I'm sorry. And do we have any items that, uh, remember that could pull out a structural consideration?
I would love to pull out VB four and talk about some options with our legal counsel.
VB four, okay. Any else? All right, uh, superintendent, is there anything you'd like to draw our attention to?
No, other than our uh normal annual agenda items for July and well, basic board approval for operationals for the school year, so. And we we did sneak in a new hire yesterday, so I know that that got changed on your agenda. But um the assistant principal from Northern Hills Middle School was was um hired, so that got put on.
All right, are there any discussion items on the consent agenda?
Here's a small question about the assistant principal position. Was I saw like on the notes, Rayanne Houghton speaking, right? Is she is she current in Forest Hills or is she from outside of our district?
That was I know. She was an assistant principal in Hudsonville. Hudsonville, yes, yes.
All right, any further discussion on the consent grouping minus VB four?
Oh, okay.
Okay, can we please have a call vote?
Yes, Dr. Richelieu.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Nightmare.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Kalabou.
Yes.
Dr. Passan.
Yes.
Mrs. Strang, yes.
All right, and then let's do VB four appointment and legal counsel.
So as you guys may recall, we've now started to spend a little more time at the MASB meetings and whatnot and have given some lead recommendations about some other people that might be able to serve us in our consulting capacity instead of global legal capacity. And just wanted to see if that was something either a work president or somebody could make some phone calls and see if it would be worthwhile for us to have other people available to us in our duties.
And you mean as like other firms that may have individual questions or like we replace Truman with somebody or?
Or add.
Okay.
Just, you know, I think we have to have known who it is we can work with. So we can't just randomly say, hey, there's a person up there that has a specialty in this area. They have to be on our list of, you know, attorneys that we can work with. So just to say, if there's other people out there, if it's pretend we could go ahead and talk to them and see if they'd like to have access to them as well.
Are we looking for attorneys that specialize in certain fields, like, you know, is it just school of trades or are you looking at somebody specializing in civil?
So, well, we ran into, we you just hear about how the boards operate. And one of the examples was when things get a little crazy, getting that person that is just always there as your consultant for like a better term. And when we've called Truman, they're exceptional, but they're trying to give us a seven-page um opinion on all the different case law, which is good. But sometimes we just need direction, you know, so it's and I don't know that we have anybody, we have Miller Johnson, we have all kinds of large firms. And many of the boards that we've worked with have an attorney that sometimes serves in more of a consulting capacity. Doesn't mean we ever have to use them. But should something come up in six months, we could even have that option without say, this is somebody we might want to add to our list. We don't pay them any money. We do nothing except add them to our list, you know?
Oh, because we have to have them on the list to be able to work with them.
To work with them, yes.
And you don't think that, and I don't know, I I truly been on the time asking, like, that Truman or Miller Johnson, they cannot operate in that capacity if we wanted them to? In addition to what else they do?
They can. It's just when we've reached out that capacity, we get seven-page opinion papers. And sometimes we just need to be able to take a phone call and say, how would you serve in this way? Or how would you guide us in this way? You know, whatever resources are available to us. Sure, they can. But again, we have all big law firms and we could, like, our Ferguson friends have that sort of operating practice. And it would just be interesting to see if that's something they can serve us as well too. And if it doesn't, we never have to tap into it.
And again, we're and we're not helping.
No.
Right. Do we, do we have that capability with MASB right now, like when we sort of we start to act and say, you know, what's this?
That's a, that's a policy-specific question.
Yeah, they had, uh, that's a great question. I mean, we've called them about all things related to MASB policy and guidance, so.
I mean, I'm sure.
I know, that was my immediate thought. It's actually, yeah, that is very quick, quick questions, but I think that is specifically the policy. And this could be any number of things.
Right, right. Yeah, I think sometimes it's good, you know, sometimes I have a question and I go, I don't have anybody I can really call and ask about this. I'm like, I could send an email or I could theoretically call Katie, but I don't have that relationship and I am gonna get, yeah, two weeks later in seven-page treaties on, with police law cited, that doesn't really help me at the moment.
No, we no longer have a lawyer.
There are questions to come on this. Nice to have have somebody that you, you know, that I I don't have anybody in particular in mind. It's not like I'm throwing out a name to put off the list right now or anything like that. But to have somebody where you're like, I have a great relationship with this person and it's not a policy question, but I just would like a little bit of legal direction, like, what, hey, so what do you think about this? Do you know who, do you know who collects and uses it?
I didn't have it right now at all.
Because I'm sure that she would tell you. I mean, if you.
All right, and so and if this is something that Kristen says, I do think I want to bring this up for further discussion with the board, that she can come back and say, I've got a couple of discussions with this person. These are the ways we think it could help us or I realize it's completely deadened, you know, completely deadened. So it wouldn't be an absolute, it just, I think, gives us the ability to say, can we have another name to the list? And that name will be presented to all of us if she finds a person or two that might be good resources for us.
Can I can I ask a question about that, seeing how what we went through for COVID, for instance, right?
Right.
And all this stuff, I mean, I'm talking about across the board in the United States of America.
Right.
Having a constitutional attorney to ask advice and stuff would have been really key during that time.
Right.
So is it more than one? I would love to see somebody constitutionalize to narrow in on stuff because yes, the right, the pressures of the world, what they're saying, and then what what does our law say, what the foundation it stands upon? Because no law can supersede the Constitution, which is what we went through during COVID. Right, what was, and then they now they're drawing back, saying, you're right, we were wrong about that. Because I don't want it to be where it falls on us. I would rather have that counsel if we ran into that again. So maybe it's just more than one attorney, somebody in in the field, not just school law or as it pertains what specific, especially what what we just went through. That would have been a key, you know, I mean, that would have been nice to have that, to know exactly.
Right.
Right.
So that's just my thoughts.
I mean, yeah, if you wanna. Do some research and then it's a research meeting.
Google the research.
Yeah, come back and then.
Okay.
Otherwise, that's fine. We can, I mean, you have permission to say we're going to add an attorney to the list of future meeting?
I think you can make a motion to add.
But it would have to be a future meeting, okay?
It doesn't say that you can appropriate this group.
Good, and you can just go ahead and motion a future meeting to say we decided to have access to one more organization. Okay.
Perfect.
So it's only to go down.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanna make sure that we got things in there, Kristen, you know, please go.
Sounds good. All right, then let's go ahead and have a motion if I can for approving VB four for a legal counsel.
I move here for VB four, I'm gonna leave it on.
Second.
Okay, Dr. Richelieu.
Yes.
Ms. Nightmare.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Kalabou.
Yes.
Dr. Passan.
Yes.
Mrs. Chiang, yes.
All right, and then we have a few items here that were not just normal come up every July business, so we pulled those out to go separately. Um and as always, there'll be discussion available. So can I have a motion to approve the award of a construction contract for Central High's storm structure against a quantum construction at a amount not to exceed one hundred ninety-three thousand four hundred fifty dollars including maintenance costs?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any questions or discussion about this storm structure?
I'm guessing this is coming out of, of what name or the legal fund?
It is coming out of our two thousand twenty one campus projects.
Okay, yeah, we had a safe hold over there, it's still partying out there. And it's local to this storm structure.
Exactly.
It was local, it was local.
Yes, it'll be.
Are you heard the discussion? Okay, we'll go, please.
Dr. Richelieu.
Yes.
Ms. Nightmare.
Yes.
Mr. Ward.
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Kalabou.
Yes.
Dr. Passan.
Yes.
Mrs. Chiang, yes.
Food service, can I have a motion that we approve the purchase of food service equipment for Collins Net Forest Heinrich and Thorn Apple from Stafford Smith Inc. at a cost not to exceed nine hundred or three hundred forty-seven and nine thousand nine hundred dollars.
Say that again, three hundred forty-seven.
Three forty-seven nine, three hundred forty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars.
So moved.
Second. Okay, discussion on this.
I think this this would be from the drawing down of the.
Yeah, so this would be from the food service fund. We continue to draw down the.
Oh, okay.
So we're trying to, you know, we went through the high schools, we've done our updates on middle schools, we've done our five, six, and now we're getting some of the other ones.
Okay.
Trying to get those updated as well. Okay, I have more on that.
Dr. Richelieu.
Yes.
Ms. Nightmare.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Kalabou.
Yes.
Dr. Passan.
Yes.
Mrs. Chiang, yes.
Cafeteria Furniture, can I please have a motion to approve the purchase of cafeteria furniture for Central High School from Duo at a cost not to exceed eighty-two thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars?
So moved.
Second.
And this is what we already talked about last month for Central, right?
Yeah.
So we're just finishing up that purchase. These are some of those. There's some booth seating and there's a couple of back of the tables. Um so this is just wrapping up that. Replace enough for cafeteria for cafeteria.
Okay.
Dr. Richelieu.
Yes.
Ms. Nightmare.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Uh, Mrs. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Kalabou.
Yes.
Dr. Passan.
Yes.
Mrs. Chiang, yes.
All right, then we've got the bond authorization and operating mileage. Uh, this is a long one. Can I have a motion that we approve the bond resolution setting the date of November seventh, two thousand twenty-three for the purpose of putting before the voters of this school district a bond proposal authorizing the district to borrow three hundred forty million dollars and setting the ballot wording and election registration notice forms and a proposal for an increase of point five mils to the operating mileage and setting the ballot wording and election registration forms notice. And further, that the board directs the administration to provide complete information for the purposes of informing the district's residents regarding these proposals.
Did you say that one more time?
I didn't say it one more time because I didn't memorize it.
I think we talked about it today.
Yes, we talked about it today.
So I moved.
So, okay, and then one thing I would like to highlight is that this is bond authorization authorization and operating mileage. Did you really talk about the bond authorization before? Do you have a refer, a word about explaining the operating mileage?
Sure, so the operating mileage um is at eighteen mils. So our foundational onset per people amount, the state assumes we're letting eighteen mils on a non-homeset property, non-primary property. The language you were talking about, maybe how we use interchangeably, right? So not just primary residents, there's really businesses that we think are bad. Um and we have not been allowing eighteen mils because we had to roll that back under what's called the heavy rollback. There's a constitutional requirement that your value, property value, we're going faster than the rate of inflation or five percent or whatever plus, you have to roll back the amount you're letting. So we've had to do that actually since two thousand sixteen. Um we had a little bit of a buffer. Um we went out to the community in two thousand fifteen and requested more than eighteen mils. We're past what we can levy at eighteen mils. So we had a little bit of a buffer, but we had to roll that back. Um and started in two thousand nineteen is when we started to get impacted by letting less than eighteen mils. Since that time, it's gone down every year with the exception of two thousand twenty-three this year. Um rate of inflation was so high and and how that worked with property values, we did not actually have to roll back. But um this would mean an additional about three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars of operating revenue for the district that is just general operations, right? We're losing that right now in the states as soon as we're collecting that. So um the proposal to the community would give us a little bit of a buffer, that point five mil, like, is technically an increase, right? Um it would get us back up to the eighteen mils for twenty-four and twenty-five tax lobbies, at which time our current uh language expires and we would need to go with the community and government ask for that renewal for whatever time period we decide. Does that make sense?
All right, I keep you going. All right, is there any other discussion or questions you're going on bond or mileage? Okay, okay, we're moving forward.
Dr. Richelieu.
Yes.
Ms. Nightmare.
Yes.
Ms. Ward.
Yes.
Mrs. Vaughn.
Yes.
Ms. Kalabou.
Yes.
Dr. Passan.
Yes.
Mrs. Chiang, yes.
Perfect. That is the end of that part of the agenda. Um we are about to hit the super tenants report, so I just wanna give a reminder. If anybody would like to provide public comment, please fill out a comment card. They will be picked up right after the super tenants report. So that is now until you, Dr. Richelieu.
No, it's on to me and my assurance week. Um, I just want to thank central office staff for all the work they're doing to make sure that the school year starts out smoothly. There's a lot of work that goes behind the scene for opening day that goes smoothly in the building. And, um, we just make huge assumptions that it just happens. And I'm seeing it in action here in this building with everyone working very hard and diligent. And even though there was a, a smaller crew all last week, I think I'm going to say we're taking some vacation time. But, um, what I saw was some, you know, individuals really working hard to try to make sure that August twenty-first goes off without a hitch. So I want to thank them for that. And it's really been, um, and I use the word fun and people start laughing when I say it's been fun because it really has been a steep learning curve. But, um, everyone has just been more than gracious to help me get acclimated. So I look forward to meeting the building administrators when they come back the first week of August. And, um, Elizabeth has been great to work with as far as, you know, preparing for what the newsletter looks like, what, how we want to communicate, what, what that timeframe looks like. So everyone has really been very accommodating, so thank you. And I look forward to our one-to-one meetings. I know I asked about, said there's some of those and, and it's really just for you to get acquainted with me and what my style is like and, um, what, you know, what we're looking to accomplish together over the next nine months.
All right, wonderful, thank you. Um, more communications, have any more communications?
I'm in this board communication, but can we do something with the calendar? I mean, I know before a day left, you talked about, there's somebody, we did this years ago when somebody was buying a house. I think it was, but, and we could not get the contract ratified, but we're able to at least tell our community what the basic dates on the calendar were so that they can play for their school year. Is there something that can draw on these lines now?
Well, the, the common calendar is out.
But that's the head with like district half days.
What we're talking with the like.
Because no one got there, but they know when Christmas is, they know when Thanksgiving is, they know when spring break is. Those are the big things. Like, I, I don't think anybody's climbing a goal. I need to know when that half day of P E is.
I think we are.
Well, if our people have to do the daycare.
Sorry, I have to. People have been asking, we're being able to.
But we were working on that already, right?
We are, and, you know, unfortunately, there are specific negotiations issues that are going to be tied to the calendar. If it was all other issues that were, I guess, being questioned and the calendar was set, I think it would be easier to get some agreement to release that. But there are at least two issues that are under negotiations that will specifically impact the calendar.
Is there any more of it that we can release? I know we got the first day. Is there any more of it that we can release?
Uh, none other than the common calendar, you know. But we, we will work with that and see if we can get agreement to at least release the first month or maybe the first two months. Um, we, we can try. I know there are people who are getting anxious.
Right.
Is there, this might have been the right problem, similar but different question. To, to understand some of the, uh, negotiation holdups that were maybe largely on their end or something, to be just more aware of where it is now and, and what the issues are that weren't ratified on their end the first time. The timeline that you see maybe moving ahead now.
So what I can tell you that would, and it wouldn't change if we went into closed session, to be honest. I think their, their next step was to go back to the association, go back to the members and do a survey to try to determine what it specifically was that the members didn't agree with in that tentative agreement. And then we've scheduled time on the twenty-fourth. That was the first time they could get back together, um, to meet with them and work through some of those issues. With any luck, that we would be able to get some of the calendar released or, um, some issues. Because e- even if we were to come to a different agreement that day, which I don't know if that would happen, they still have a process that takes several weeks to get a new T A ratified. So, you know, it, it just pushes everything out.
Um, but if we could get some agreement outside of that T A to release some of the calendar, we certainly would try and do that.
Great, thank you.
But it sounds like you won't give anything back till at least the twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Okay.
And remind me, if there's no new, um, contract, there, the old contract stays in effect until there is a new one.
That's right.
And it was not that date at this point in your life.
Right, gotcha.
Okay. Any other board communications? Okay, Elizabeth, I got nothing, so I'll.
I was gonna ask a quick question.
I'm sorry.
And I could pull it on there, I didn't. Is the reason we're meeting at Fine Arts for all of our dates because of the superintendent search? Should we have more room for people?
No, I think the, we should go to buildings. Yeah, and I think we moved it this year because we still want to do the highlights of the buildings, but it's easy enough for them to come to us, like, if, it's, you have all of the equipment all in one place. You don't have to have the custodial staff staying late and paying extra for them to come in and clean up and move stuff around all the time. This way it's all just stays in one building. We'll still be able to get the highlights, but it'll be a little bit easier functionally to have everything.
I think if we look at the discussion that's listed, you, that the building is finished, they will all be there anyway.
Okay.
So why not just do it, um, right now? So we don't have to like, uh, get all the other buildings to agree for this year. We're not going to switch anywhere potentially in the spring.
I don't know, I, I'm not familiar with the.
Oh, maybe I'm.
Potentially switching the spring anyway.
Imagine.
All right, well. So sorry, maybe, but you said we missed that.
We were just talking about the decision to move all the meetings to the Fine Arts Center.
Yeah, I know that, right. And you said something about spring, which you said.
I, I thought that we had said, we're moving all the meetings anyway once the new admin building is done to the Fine Arts Center or, or to that area. Um, so we should just go ahead and do it anyway at the beginning of this year instead of changing it mid-year.
Yes, I don't remember a conversation about that because you know it just opens that back up. But if we're going to be in one location for every meeting, then what is our argument against live streaming?
Right, yeah, I think that would probably be the only, yes. And then do you have the new, is that, is that, the new admin building was not designed with obviously a particular board space involved. I'm sure there's a, someplace in there where a meeting of that size could happen, but is that the vision? Do we know? Does anybody know?
Yeah, this is, this is new information, to be honest.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I said, I would, but it's, it's the same to Fine Arts Center. Because it's a big space.
So I like having to see all the different facilities in there.
So from what I, so from what I remember.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was just saying, from what I remember was that it was not, there's not a boardroom in the ad, in the new admin building. And that the only space that would be big enough to hold it is actually up on the second floor.
Right.
And it's not easily cut off from other areas. So we, and we don't have people walking around with people's offices at a board meeting. So I think that's generally not there. I think we do have one plan there for right after the, um, after it opens to sort of.
But presumably, the future may be the.
But, yeah, the, the plan would be deployed forward to other planets. So do we want to open it back up to introduce live streaming there? Because if the crowds are getting bigger during superintendent search, the only thing I don't like about being at Fine Arts is just the lights. That I, you can't even see in the audience.
Oh, we're not on stage.
Oh, oh, we would, we would, we have the lobby here.
Oh, oh, okay.
Will either be in the lobby or in the whole.
I can't stand this, they start filling.
Yes, stop.
On stage, so I can't see the.
I, it's totally within people's that have a conversation.
They're just so long and, and they, but if we open the door back up to live streaming, I feel like that communication piece of the people have been asking for, I, you know, I mean, bring things back around, especially during the time that we're doing superintendent search. It might be worth looking into because it would be a same location. I'm just sharing my personal opinion, but I find it sad to end a tradition that I thought was a real point of pride in going from building to building. And, and yeah, I, I really just like to hear the, the very strong and good reasons why we're not going to be doing that.
Yeah, like I said, I think it, it's a combination of factors of, you know, the difficulty of setting things up and with extra staff work and paying overtime for people to come in and clean up afterwards and take everything down and storing and moving and hauling the disruption of the stuff that happens. As well as the fact that, I mean, I, I would love to have a way for us to be able to get into buildings more regularly where we actually see something. Like, I don't feel like we alarm that much about the buildings by going and sitting in the gym or their media center. We don't really get.
So how do you envision that being something added to? Like, we talk about consistent visits together to learn about every building. I, like, I'm just wondering what the, that.
I, I, I don't have a specific vision of like, okay, the third Monday, November month, we're going to go around. Which is in all the buildings.
I'm not sure that that would be one.
Right, yeah. But I don't, I don't feel like, I, I mean, I'm only speaking for myself. I don't feel like I gained all of that much by going and sitting in Orchard View's library. I didn't feel like that lent me any more insight into their building. I loved hearing, you know, the presentation, but I think for the presentation anywhere, and I think just the, having the stability and also for the community to know, I'm going to a board meeting. It's always at the same place and they're not having to go, where, where is it? You know, is it in Orchard View this week? No, it's in Net Forest, no. It's over, you know, there's a lot of confusion. It makes it a little bit easier for the community to always know that they're always going in the same spot. As well as being, have all the materials there.
So was this a decision that you had made?
Uh, yeah, I worked on it with Val.
I'm referring about it. With the, with the, uh, passion for the agenda. Where the meetings are.
I think this has been talked about before.
Yeah, I was saying.
I honestly have not been in this meeting. Because I, I was not at those meetings. So that's when we talked about that. Way out of this, this is brand new. That, so with the question I guess you're asking, is this, is this considered a decision that needs to be made by a whole board versus one person? Right, and it's like, I'm, I'm like, I get that this, if that's the decision and, I mean, the reasons why, I may have no opinion or impact on that. And if, if the district cabinet thinks this is a great idea, like, I mean, that's fine, fine. But I am just a little surprised and openly disappointed.
I like going to the schools because I feel like I see teachers, I would say.
Yes.
And I get to talk with the principals one-on-one. And then sometimes I get to hear about how they're excited about what's going on in their school or there, sometimes it's like, hey, I'd like to talk to you about X, Y, and Z. Like, you know, like even when we went to Northern, even just talking to the teachers about the next program and things, and I know about the way our schedule is going to look like pretty soon. That's, that's always a great opportunity and I like that they show a lot, like some of the teachers will show up to us.
Yeah, that's, that's been my experience as well. I always talk to the principal one-on-one. Each, we're still going to highlight, that's not going to change, just the physical location. So like March might be Ada Elementary, that's all still going to happen. They're still going to do, you know, I've got a rotation of what buildings we're going to highlight. And so those folks that, you know, come to the Fine Arts Center, so that piece of it's not going to change.
And then I think we had the lights, that this is the decision that we made. I think you were going to talk about, I think we had live streamed back to what's going on to the public then. So that for people who can't make it or opens the door. But I would rather have talked about it before we made the decision, because, you know, it's a good. So I'm agreeing with you.
Yeah, and I would agree about live streaming, it opens that right back up because that was the big, um, preventer for that was the changing of the locations.
I think we need both. I think we can take advantage of the operational efficiencies and personalities by doing it in one place. It might be a little more of an effort on our part thing, but I, I think it'd be awesome to draw it to the schools. At least in your March, you know, find an event that your kids are doing something right after school or in the middle of the day or something. Do you, like, like Northern has done a few times, they, they just invite us to come and sit for their whatever. So, so as a way to get in the building, it'd be a little more effort for the seven of us to have two things maybe or something. But, because I agree, like, you can just walk through the halls and see the artwork and whatever. If you feel more acquainted with some of those buildings, I don't know, well. Um, I, it's important to move to the Fine Arts Center, I think it makes sense, you know, operationally and whatever. So I think we should be agree on how we can still get to other buildings if we want to.
Yeah, I, I love it when we get the invitations to go and I get a chance to go and see some, like when we did the, that shop tank panel kind of thing at Northern.
I'm, I'm assuming preschool, elementary school would love to find an activity to invite us to. If we said, we would love for you to invite us to, to something, you know.
Yeah.
More of it, I guess, for the class, but if it's, yeah, some people probably would be out there type of like, you know, that goes a, a goodwill or whatever it's having.
Right. And I'll be happy to talk to the communications team to see sort of what possibilities there are for live streaming and, you know, what works, what doesn't. And this would be another place where having sort of a, a legal counsel or you can call them up and just go, hey, walk me through this. What do we need to do? Like, what are some things that we need to consider when we talk about live streaming? Um, to make sure that we are making, you know, make sure we're doing things the correct way for, for O M A and A D A and all of those things that are required, that you need to look into.
Live stream may review for your conversation.
Yeah.
But I don't want people calling me and texting us and making our meetings last six hours. Like, if you watch, yeah, someone's out there.
It is one memory.
It's, it's one way memory. It's a one-way.
One way, actually, is watching.
They can just sit at home and watch, like, they're watching TV.
No, they don't, no, no conversation.
Yeah. You're.
Yeah, you have, you would have to be in person to.
Okay.
Help out.
The notes, yeah.
Yeah, you have to.
I want. We're good there.
So can we, can we, I don't know how this works, so we motion to put it on the table to talk about. I mean, next time I made that.
I'll just, I'll just get with communications department and ask about it. Well, I'll go back and forth, yeah, I can go back and forth.
But so can we still put it on the agenda to discuss it? So we vote on it, is that something we have to vote on, is the decision we're making correct?
It's not a, it's not a district decision, but that's more of an administrative procedural decision. So it's not something that we really need to go on. So. All right, any other board communications? Nope. Okay. Uh, we did not have any further comments. Um, so we are up to closing remarks. That person move?
No.
Um, I look forward to our meeting in August and I'm excited about the bond and what it does for a district to continue to move it forward. It's important for, um, school districts to be proactive as far as their facilities and their learning environments and how we continue to change our delivery. And that goes hand in hand with what we provide our teaching staff. And so I, I was really excited to see the list of the bond and what was continuing from what we did in twenty-eighteen as a community. And I'm confident that this is a community that understands that you have to be forward-thinking. So I'm very positive about what your November election would look like. And as far as just really, um, those communication points are so critical and having those talking points at all the venues and buildings are going to be really important. So, you know, having open meetings, it's just kind of like having a P T O meeting that you invite them to come and have a conversation about bond and about it. So I, I strongly encourage us.
Perfect, thank you. Um, is there any other business for the board? All right, all of further business, then we just need to adjourn.